Let's all stand for me.
As councilman, I give the lead in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, would you call the roll?
Mayor Pressgraves.
Here.
Mr. Vickers.
Here.
Mr. Dolph Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Sharrow.
Here.
Mr. Lancaster.
Here.
Mr. Sellers.
Here.
Ms. Kennets.
Any additions or resolutions on the agenda?
Uh, Mayor, yes, I have one at the request of the Assistant Town Manager. Could we include an update on the Luray Meadows, Luray Meadows site development plan?
Oh, yes, second that request.
Mr. Lancaster.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Mr. Dolph Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Shabrow.
Yes.
You want to talk about that, Brian?
Uh, whatever you want to do there.
Let's go with it.
Okay.
You hold the plate.
Get it out of the way?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, on your, at your dais, you have a long packet that says good circulation sheet. I want to give you an update on where we are with the project. This is advertised. This is the fifty-two unit apartment complex on Airport Road. That is a, it's an overall project by People Incorporated Virginia, and the town has a small piece of that through the community development block grant, an amount of about seven hundred thousand dollars. Seventy thousand of that will go toward administration, management, and oversight project, and roughly six hundred and thirty thousand will go toward construction. For our portion of the project, we had two bidders. You can see them listed here. The overall total base bid obviously was more than six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but that, what that means is that the remainder of that portion of the project will be picked up by People Incorporated Virginia. We'll only pay what we have obligated to pay. So that's an important point. I want to make that for the record. The other important point is there was a legal question about the submittal for debarred status, and there's a letter in here from me, Angel Paket, that was reviewed by Mr. Bykins, which indicates that the department form was considered an informality, and the town's going to waive that informality. So that's an important point as well.
What exactly does that mean, Brian? I'm sorry.
It means you're debarred from, you're not allowed to file for contracts that include state or federal money.
Okay.
Uh, so you're supposed to provide the statement, but we do that research, actually, Department of Housing and Community Development does that research, uh, in the thirty-day period between the notice of intent to award and the notice of award letter. That's part of our due diligence. So, um, one reason I want to bring this up to you tonight is that, um, hopefully at your December meeting, there will be an action item for a notice of award, um, hopefully to pioneer construction. Once we do our thirty days of due diligence and check everything out, and Richmond is satisfied, um, we'd ask you folks to vote on a notice of award then. But what we are planning on doing, unless somebody in council has an objection, is issuing the notice of apparent low bidder and the intent to award to pioneer construction tomorrow. That begins the thirty-day clock for us, both sides to do their research and due diligence, and then from that point, we'll be looking at the December seventh meeting for an action item. So, if there's any questions, happy day. Was this bid in range of expectations of people in New York? A little higher. It was, we had estimated somewhere around seven hundred, and the low bid came in about seven sixty-four. So, fairly close. Contractors are pretty fat and happy right now, so that's... So far, but they're getting ready to set their schedules for next year's construction, so they're looking for, looking for drop.
Any concern with the spread of the bid?
Uh, we looked at that, and, uh, you know, with only two, it's really tough to tell, but, um, the lower bid was within sixty to seventy thousand dollars of the engineer's estimate, so we felt that was fairly accurate bid. Not sure what happened to the second bid. It's, uh, over two hundred thousand dollars more. Not sure whether that, you know, has anything to do with the site, or whether they're just busy and, you know, they want to make a bid, you know, you know how that plays out. So, um, this was within fifteen percent of the engineer's estimate, so we feel pretty confident that, uh, that should be what it was valued at, on the street.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for Brian?
Thank you. Thank you, Gary and Jerry. Appreciate it.
I'd like to give a recognition to a couple of people. Mr. Dolph Meyer, he's been elected as the new mayor of the town of Luray. He will get in the saddle on January first. Jason, okay? He's had the ticket. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Joe Sowers, the seventh. Congratulations to you. And Lincoln Webb, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Probably the last time you were there, though.
That was the fun one.
County friends and aldermen, town polliers like that. All right, continuity of government announcement. This meeting, a town council being held pursuant to the April thirteenth, twenty twenty ordinance of continuity in the government of Luray. The town courts shall read the names of the council members present and identify those who are elected to the press. In-person attendance by the public is permitted, subject to the limitations of the most recent executive order evading guidelines issued by Governor Norton. This meeting can be viewed live on the town's Facebook page and recorded. It will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Minutes from the meeting will be posted on the town website after being approved by the town council. Okay, everybody's got your consent agenda, gentlemen, and ladies, what's your wishes?
Um, Mayor, I'll move to approve the following consent agenda. Minutes of the regular council meeting, October thirteenth, twenty twenty, minutes of the council work session, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. The council's payable checks totaling one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven dollars and forty-six dollars.
Any suggestions, second amendment?
Discussion.
Ten dollars, you call the roll.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Mr. Dolph Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Shabrow.
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster.
Yes.
General Sissons, comment period. Mr. King, I recognize you. You take, state your name and address for me. Thank you.
Andre King, five thirty-seven Samuel Drive.
Thank you.
I wanted to take this opportunity first to say to Mr. Leeward, this may be the last time I get the opportunity. For the thirty-two years, thank you, Mayor Pressgraves, for your twelve years, and then your four additional ones in council. Thank you all for what you've all done for this community and for Luray. Um, I'm here to talk to you about the West Ray Recreation Center briefly, just to give you all an update of what we're doing for the community at this particular time. Um, currently, we're going to be hosting choices in their board. They don't have the room to deal with the COVID restrictions right now, so we're going to be hosting their board meetings as they conduct their business as it pertains to the shelter that they have in the neighborhood. Uh, we also are now hosting the weekly anger management classes that are mandated by the courts in Page County through Deborah Lucas and Judith Weaver. So we're hosting them every Thursday at this time. We have a study hall that we host every Wednesday, in which right now we're averaging about fifty kids from the entire county, most from Luray. Some of them, uh, because of internet capability, or they have working parents, were most behind in school. Some of them had not even opened their schoolwork at all. We have tutors that come in every week to get them caught up and to bring their grade point average up, in particular while we're dealing with this COVID, uh, COVID epidemic. We're having monthly youth events. Our last one was on Halloween, which we hosted about a hundred to a hundred and twenty kids. We have tutoring that we're going to be continuing and adding on days too. We have a mentorship program which we've already started, and we also host a men's group named Men Talk One-O-One, who goes throughout the entire community, starting with the west end, but the goal is for them to enter into the entire town of Luray, cleaning up trash, helping to benefit the community, and keeping the streets clean from drugs, debris, and other things. Um, what we're asking is going forward, that we form some type of meaningful relationship, um, financially, that we can join together. Just a month ago, I listened to the hundred-year-old relationship that the town has with the Park Association, which is a beautiful thing. They offer us opportunity for youth to have recreation and for us to have beautiful places in Luray, and with that, we're able to partner with the town to make those things happen. My desire is, with the Recreation Center, that some form of relationship that will correspond with that could take place. Right now, all of the funding, which goes up into the hundreds of thousands of dollars, comes from generous donations from people in this county. Just about everyone I see, everyone I see on this board, has at one point or another donated to the cause. But for us to do what we need to do in the community and in Luray to keep it strong and to develop what we need as a recreation center, we're looking for a stability, for a stable partnership, and we're hoping we can find that with the town. Um, I'm leaving saying that, right now, the next goal that we have is a thirty thousand dollar project, which we're going to be partnering with Pettit Pavings to do. We're going to be putting a hundred-by-hundred basketball court in our bottom field. It'll be similar to the one that you now see at, with the school systems at Luray Elementary. We'll also have a full playground for youth and a picnic area. This will be open to the entire town, and it will be open with lights, so that kids have an opportunity and an outlet that will keep them off of the streets and give them a positive place to go, with safe mentors and chaperones to advise them. Also, right now, we deal with about ten thousand dollars in maintenance, utility bills, and other things to keep us functioning. We are a complete nonprofit. Um, we have no set agenda of people that are benefiting in any way from the nonprofit, other than the youth in this community that we seek in our endeavor to grow. So I'm hoping that going into twenty twenty-one, we have a new board, um, we have different outlooks on the way that we do business now with COVID. So I'm hoping that this is an opportunity for us to continue the partnership we already have and to go deeper into it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got some winners here, um, from the Halloween event. Uh, Brian, do you have that you want to reach out? I have that. Uh, as we all know, I've said that we had seven hundred and fifty, um, dressed-up kids at, at the Ralph Dean. So, the spookiest nine-and-under was sponsored by Massanutten Country Corner. It was Angela Moreno, and the prize was the Massnutten Country Corner gift certificate. Then on the spookiest, ten-to-fourteen-year-olds, again sponsored by Massnutten Country Corner, was Lexus Touchstone. Uh, the prize again was a gift certificate from Massnutten County Corner. Funniest, nine-and-under, sponsored by Massnutten Country Corner, was Levi Rafter, I think. Uh, the prize was another gift certificate. And I'll do one more. I'll do the funniest, and that was ten-to-fourteen-year-olds, and it was sponsored by us, the town of Luray. It was Gabriel and Julia Rotava, and the prize was a comedy movie night gift basket. We handed on it. Most creative.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers. Most creative, nine-and-under, sponsored by the Warehouse Art Gallery, Holden Tanner. The prize was a Warehouse Art Gallery gift certificate. Most creative, ten-to-fourteen, sponsored by Mama's Treasures, Maria, Maria Clark. Prize, Blu-ray movie and drawing instruction book. Most beautiful, nine-and-under, sponsored by Valley Eye Clinic, Ella Killer Hilliard. Prize, polarized sunglasses. Most beautiful, ten-to-fourteen, sponsored by the town of Luray, Emma Gray. Prize, California Nails Gift Certificate. Uh, best overall, nine-and-under, sponsored by Visionary Painters, Holden Tanner. Prize, Virginia Gift Shop Gift Certificate. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Shabrow.
Thank you. Best adult, sponsored by Kathy Miranda, Zachary Kiefish. The prize was Kathy Miranda. The prize was Kathy Miranda's lady gift certificate. Uh, so the, this was the winner, I guess, then, Kathy Miranda and Zachary Kiefish. Best couple, pair, sponsored by Gathering Grounds, Bison Leap, and Peyton Rutt. Uh, and the prize also was donated by Gathering Grounds as a gift certificate. Uh, best family group, sponsored by Lafayette Lodge Number One Thirty-Seven, David Tiffany, Abel, Hale, and Ali Atwood, and the prize was movie passes to the New HCA. The best pet, was sponsored by Mystic Pet Resort and Spa. Uh, and the winner was Neville, and it was a bag of dog food, a twenty-twenty-one gallon. The best scavenger hunt winner, uh, they guessed two hundred and twenty-five actual number of bats, and there were two hundred and thirty-nine. It was Emery Lucas, uh, and Keith Good, and the prize was Domino's Pizza gift card, and the prizes are available here at the town hall, and we picked up by November twentieth. Thank you. Every winner participating.
Get all of them around the halls.
Okay, let me run along your test flight carol space.
Steve, what? They're not here. They're not here.
The red downed validation. Marty, welcome.
Hey, councilman, how are you?
Good. Hi.
I just have a couple things, so I'll move through pretty quick. Um, the Luray holiday ornament is here. I'm gonna hand that to Joey and let you guys take a look at it. This year, we chose the Luray Fire Department. Um, twenty twenty-one will be their hundred-and-twentieth anniversary of an all-volunteer fire department here in our town. So, a really pretty ornament, three-D, and they are available for purchase, three different places in town, the Chamber of Commerce, baby moons, um, and the Virginia Gift Shop. So, I hope you guys will find a great gift in that this year. I wanted to let you know that, um, LDI has been working alongside Parks and Rec, um, for the holiday events, and we have decided to take over the window decorating contest for the downtown businesses. We'll still offer cash prizes, um, but hopefully we can get all those businesses in the holiday spirit and make downtown light up and be a little extra sparkly this year. I'm really excited to let you guys know about the facade improvement grant, um, a grant program that we brought back, um, in twenty nineteen, and we will continue in twenty twenty-one. Our next cycle just opened today. It will close on January fourth. That's when applications are due. Um, I have a little flyer here that I'll pass around to you guys as well. Same as last cycle, there will be three grants awarded. These are fifty-fifty matching grants for, um, buildings and businesses in the historic downtown district. Um, the matching grants are up to twenty-five hundred. So, we're excited to be able to bring that back. There's a lot of exciting things happening downtown right now, so a great time to, to help those folks spruce up the outsides of their buildings. Um, the last thing that I just wanted to let you guys know about is that, um, in the coming weeks, you will see that we are hiring, um, at LDI. Um, we will be looking for, um, a new program director effective outward. Any questions, ladies?
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Appreciate it. Chair Zach, town admissions stream. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Um, the, the, following the advertising of our small business grant, we received a number of applications. The applications that we received actually exceeds, uh, the funding, the twenty-five thousand dollar funding that council awarded to this program. Staff would recommend that council consider awarding to all of those applicants that are, that qualified and submitted by the deadline, and appropriate an additional five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to fully fund all of the applications that we were, that were received. And there was an, uh, an updated motion that is at your desk.
Mayor, I move the town council approved the COVID-nineteen small business grants as presented. I further move to add two hundred and fifty dollars to the town's allocated CARES Act funds to include Page One of Page County and the businesses awarded paid for.
Do you mean that fact, right, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Five thousand. Oh, now this is...
It was the...
Five thousand two hundred and fifty.
There should be a loose sheet that...
Oh, okay. Does that mean...
I don't think there's a motion. Give me a second.
Close enough? I got it now. Go over to read it.
If you want to do it.
All right. I further move to add five thousand two hundred and fifty of the town's allocated CARES Act funds to include Page One of Page County, Escape Two-One-One, and Luray Village Company, and the businesses awarded paid for. Second.
Have a motion?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
And you want to call the roll, please?
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Mr. Dolph Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Shabrow.
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster.
Yes.
CARES Act, you have a part of the bid?
Yes, sir. As we discussed at the, uh, your, your work session, the fire, volunteer fire company has requested council to consider a donation of forty thousand dollars of our CARES Act funding to allow them to purchase a new twenty twenty-one Chevy Tahoe to allow them to respond to COVID-related incidents.
Take a motion.
That has been approved by the county, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Similar to the, the vehicles that we have ordered for our police department, they've determined that, uh, anything COVID-related with emergency response is a qualifying.
Is that leave money left?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, we anticipate having sufficient funds for some of the, uh, police reimbursement that we had discussed with council.
Well, Mayor, I, I move the town council awards of forty thousand dollars to the town's allotted CARES Act funds to the Luray Fire Department, purchase twenty twenty-one Chevy Tahoe, to respond to COVID-nineteen-related emergencies as...
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion.
And you want to call the roll?
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Mr. Dolph Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Shabrow.
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster.
Yes.
CARES Act, West Luray, you want to make a sound?
Yes, sir. Uh, as we discussed at your work session, council has received a request from the West, West Luray Rec Center to donate five thousand dollars towards the installation of their building. Uh, the town attorney has confirmed that as there is tutoring and, uh, other, uh, facilities, uh, other activities that are education-related in this period of COVID, that this would be a qualifying request, uh, and, and staff would recommend council consider the request as presented.
Counsel, I'd like to see us up that to the full seventy-eight eighty for the bid. That way we cover that full expense.
I would second that.
So, I, I move the town council award seven thousand eight hundred and eighty of the town's allocated CARES Act funding to the West Luray Recreation Center, living legacies for the installation of insulation at the facility to provide winter distance learning for school-aged children, as presented, with the amendment.
And I'll second it.
We can have a motion, a second, a discussion.
And you want to call the roll?
Mr. Dolph Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Shabrow.
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Guys, before we leave the subject, Steve, can we get a update on where we are with the commitment so far?
We, we can submit that to you all tomorrow if you would, you would like, yes, sir.
Thank you. Town of Luray Christmas party, Mr. Burke?
Uh, yes, sir. As council discussed at your work session, uh, due to the concern of COVID at a, at a large, uh, party, uh, council has discussed, uh, canceling the Christmas party and then using those, uh, funds that had been budgeted for the event to, uh, supplement a, a bonus to your staff, uh, at Christmas.
Why don't we take that money and let each department have their own little get-together? I bet they'd rather do that. What y'all think?
I don't know if that's accomplishing our goal.
Well, I'm always safe because it's been mentioned to me by four different...
Oh, okay.
Don't shoot the messenger.
No.
Now you got two options.
We have different tax departments. How would we, just private property?
So, as presented, this will be taxable. What's if we take gift cards, it would be non-tax?
No, gift cards would also be...
Even that's nominal now?
Yes, sir.
Now, so order food from a restaurant to have a lunch, get an other half-day off, that's not taxable.
Steve, is it doable, or the department heads want to do this?
I, I think, uh, some recognition of, of, of our staff at, at, at the holidays would be welcomed by all of our employees, yes, sir.
I'm gonna try and make a motion there, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm moving the town council cancel the Christmas party, uh, and directs the, uh, town manager to distribute, distribute the funds amongst the department heads to have their own.
Okay, got a motion. Second. We got a second discussion.
Mr. Shabrow.
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Dolph Meyer.
Yes.
Donation of property, Mr. Burke?
Before we leave Christmas, what are we doing about, is there a parade? Are we doing a parade? We want a reverse parade, or what?
Yeah, uh, we are, yes, sir. We will be advertising for that very shortly. Uh, what we are planning to do is to have a reverse parade, where we will have the, uh, participating floats will park in the westbound, uh, travel lane of Main, of East Main Street from Broad Street, as far back as the, the floats would, um, require, and then maintain traffic in the eastbound direction, heading from Broad Street up towards, uh, the, the shopping center at Reservoir, and then allow people to drive, maintain a safe distance from the floats, and enjoy the Christmas parade that way, rather than having the, the typical parade where people will be bunching up on the street. This will allow, uh, the, the people that are viewing it to remain in their vehicles and remain at a safe distance. So, yes, sir, we are having that, and we will be...
When's the date of that, Steve? When's the schedule of that?
Oh, is it eleven, twelve?
I think it's the Saturday, the twelfth.
It's, it, yes. It, it's that second Saturday in December.
Thank you.
I'm glad we're still having that.
Along with that, I just wanted to let you all know that, in working with the town,
we will still also have the tree lighting ceremony on the Powell Plaza. Um, that will be Friday, December fourth. Um, the plaza will open at six-thirty, and we will light the tree, um, with you, Mr. Pressgraves, Mr. Mayor, and, and you, Mr. Dolph Meyer, uh, as well. I think we would invite you both to be there and, uh, light that tree, um, on that Friday, the fourth. So we'll still do that. Um, we should have some carollers there and some photo opportunities, so welcoming the, the community, and we're free for that as well.
Sorry.
Do you want a motion on that?
No, uh, no, on, on, on the Christmas stuff?
On parade?
No, sir. Uh, we're, we're, we're carrying that forward.
Donation of property?
Uh, yes, sir. As, as we discussed at the, uh, previous work session, the Blue Ridge Bank has offered the town the ability to receive Lot Forty-Two A eleven eight one seventy-seven, which encompasses, uh, the area around Hawksville Creek, as well as a couple of parking lots. Uh, and, uh, council had requested how much, uh, real estate tax was generated from that lot in the previous year, and that was about two hundred and forty dollars. Uh, and based on the condition of the parking lot, uh, staff would recommend council consider, uh, accepting the, the lot in its... accepting the, the lot in its entirety.
Upper envelope?
Yes, sir.
As I mentioned before, it does have some income, doesn't it, from the lease of...
There is about $6,000 in...
$6,000 a year.
Yes, sir.
That's included?
That is included, yes, sir.
We pick up the leases, I understand.
Yes, sir.
And that goes up every year?
An upper parking lot, there's much of a load.
But the, the pavement condition is okay. It, it, it's not in terrible shape and would not require immediate resurfacing.
Sounds like the revenue would more than cover, advertise than that replacement of it to win a decent general upkeep of property. Sounds like a wonderful thing.
Got a motion there?
So move? I'll have it in front of me to say the whole spiel on the need to.
Well, I'll second it. Get up, raise your hand. Motion, second, discussion? And you want to call the robe?
Mr. Lancaster?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Mr. Doffmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrow?
Yes.
The president of our attorney?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, the mayor and council. Wanted to take this opportunity to give you some information regarding an upcoming vacancy on council. When council member Doffmeyer takes the oath as mayor in January, his position on council becomes vacant because he can't hold over those offices at the same time. That vacancy will trigger two different...
[inaudible].
So, that vacancy will trigger two deadlines. The first is to file a petition for writ of election to the circuit court. It has to be filed within 15 days, and that will ask that the court order an election be held for the position during the next general election, which would be next November, when the, when the governor is, is elected. Secondly, council will have 45 days from the vacancy to appoint someone to serve in the position until the election takes place. So the proposal that we would set forth would be that we immediately advertise for applications from those who are interested in the position. Council could review those applications and select who is to be interviewed during the January, regular January meeting. The interviews could then be conducted during the January work session, and then council could act to fill the vacancy during the regular February meeting, which would fall within that 45-day time period. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
The 45 days starts January 1st?
It was, it would start from the day of the vacancy occurs, which would occur when you qualify and take the oath of office for mayor. So that would be the earliest that that could take place. It could be, take place possibly afterwards, but certainly before the January meeting.
Did it manage to do it earlier or later?
I would recommend doing it, the first week of the new year, that, that January 1st is a Friday, clerk's office is going to be closed that day and then through the weekend. So I would recommend qualifying and taking the oath that next week, and that way it's done ahead of the meeting, which would be the following Monday.
If council don't, they'll listen to the judge, will they?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we have to march out. Sir, four more days, folks. Uh, I'm sorry. Just want to remind everybody that when you get your certification from there, be sure that you go to the courthouse to take your oath, because what he had at one time, nobody took their oath. And they're going for about six or seven months, and have to go back and redo everything again. So don't make that same mistake twice. All right, council comments? No comments? I don't have no announcements. I just wish everybody that was elected the best. Keep your friends close and enemies closer. Challenge before you start, then challenge when you die. And good luck to you. Meet my attorney.